At this point, I'm going to ask... We're going to... ...Gania, introduce Mr. Bradley Marcel Fugens.
Mamai Flabau! Mamai Flabau! Esu pa we! Esu pa we putiye leba! Nuka ba leba! DJ, give me a bit, give me a bit! We come in. Nuka ba leba! Denrynov! 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 Ladiya ti buayo kakiye Shaun! Isati se mapipi! Isati se gola yaf! Memwe di! Se David Lakai Malmutayla, Denrynov! Se no... The man! The man! The man himself! Bradley! Nuka ba leba! Menu tikwa! Tikwa! Don't say that! Don't say that! You are welcome, say you are welcome! Political leader, God bless you!
Boswe, boswe! Mamai Flabau kiya la me wik boswe! It's a pleasure to be here again, to continue what we call Operation Rescue St. Lucia. We need to rescue St. Lucia from the high cost of living. We need to rescue St. Lucia from the victimization. We need to rescue St. Lucia from the high level of corruption. And the list goes on and on and on. The song "Me Boss Laouvi", is proving... It's proving that I'm a real boss. Because I am the leader in Denrynov right now. I lead, I lead and they follow. I lead and they follow. Boss La i matnik, yo vla i matnik. Boss La kafe whistle stop lejedi, yo vla kafe whistle stop lejedi. Everything I have done so far in the political arena, my opponent is following behind. And that is why Denrynov is in the state that it is right now. Because we have a follower in Denrynov and not a leader as our parliamentary representative. When you elect me as your next district representative, we will have a true leader in Denrynov to take Denrynov to higher heights. My brothers and sisters, for the last five years, we have witnessed St. Lucia going down a very slippery slope. We have a serious problem in St. Lucia. And we need all St. Lucians, whether you're from New York, whether you're from New Jersey, whether you're from Connecticut, we need all St. Lucians to play their role whenever the bell is rung to come rescue St. Lucia. We cannot wait any longer. If we wait any longer, St. Lucia will be a failed state. So we need to rescue St. Lucia. Hopefully, it'll ring the bell tomorrow and our people in New York and the other countries will rally home to come and play their part in rescuing Sweet Helen. I see a lot of familiar faces in the crowd tonight. And I know those faces truly care about our Sweet Helen. Our Sweet Helen is in trouble, my brothers and sisters. And we need to rescue our Sweet Helen. I like the turnout here tonight. The place is overcrowded. It's a huge turnout tonight. But the most important turnout is whenever Philip J. P. rings the bell. We need that same turnout in Sweet Helen. We need that same turnout in Sweet Helen. Because they are under pressure. But we will continue this mission from island to island, from country to country, from house to house, from constituency to constituency. We as a party will do what we have to do to rescue sweet St. Lucia. All vote counts. All vote counts. All vote counts. And we can only win with numbers, not a huge crowd. On election day is the most important day. And this will be one of the most important elections in the history of Sweet Helen. We need a true leader to lead St. Lucia. And that leader is no other than the great, the great... In... In St. Lucia right now. In St. Lucia right now, my brothers and sisters, you have to work two hours to be able to afford a tin of corned beef. Two hours! To be able to afford a tin of corned beef. And in St. Lucia right now, you need at least three dollars to buy four bread. The cost of living in St. Lucia is very high. And our people are struggling to survive. But thank you to our St. Lucians living abroad that has seized their families back home. I know right now you guys may have to send more groceries, more barrels along St. Lucia for the last five years because the people cannot afford the high cost of living. When UWP gets into office, you will not have to send barrels in St. Lucia that often. Because the economy will be thriving, people will be working, people will be getting paid. And the cost of living would be a lot lower than what it is right now. In any country or island, once the cost of fuel is high, automatically the cost of everything will be high. That is common sense, basic common sense. But in St. Lucia, they cap the price of fuel at a very high price. And that is what pushing the level of poverty we have in St. Lucia right now. When we get into office, we will reduce the VAT to make sure St. Lucia are able to afford food and put food on the table. We will also get rid of that 2.5, that misleading 2.5%, we will be getting rid of it. They say it was a health and safety tax. But that's not what it is. Because all stakeholders in St. Lucia are feeling that pain of that 2.5%. We'll also be introducing our health program. Too often when people get sick in St. Lucia, they have "Look at your fundraising dance", "Nunia Western", "Nunia Bingo". Under the United Workers' Party, all St. Lucians will be equipped with a health insurance of $75,000. Sima diva! Also, our farmers, our farmers who help build the schools, our farmers who build, who help build the roads during the green gold era will be receiving a pension. That is very important. Because our farmers work hard to build infrastructure of St. Lucia. And today, they cannot afford the basic needs, the basic needs they cannot afford to buy it. And we will, we will change that when we get into office. We also have a serious crime problem in St. Lucia. On Thursday evening, two people got shot from my constituency. I sympathize with the family. When we get into office, we will put measures in place to make sure we see a reduction in crime. We will make sure we put a mechanism in place so the youth, the young men of St. Lucia, before they choose to pull the trigger, they'll choose to grab a bag and go to work. That is a party who cares about its people. And you have to empower your people. If you don't empower your people, we will have what is happening right now in St. Lucia, which is a crime pandemic. People cannot afford to buy food. They say "putting people first", but it's putting friends and family first. They are the only ones getting rich in St. Lucia. They are the only one building condos and buying property all over St. Lucia. While the little Malay way keep on suffering and suffering and begging all the time. The only thing they have to offer to the little Malay way in St. Lucia is a massive voucher or a step program. My solution, we worth more than that. We worth more than a massive voucher or the step program, which happens three times a year. We need sustainable employment. We need paydays. We need to equip our people with job letters so they can change their lives and livelihood. I will not even touch on the one they've had free. Because that's what we call a copycat. The Labour Party has no vision. Every time the United Workers' Party puts plans out, they come out and put something else out. So we lead and they follow in. We spoke about, we spoke about the free education for Sahafer. They came out with something for the preschool. So every time we speak, they react. We have a very reactive government. And that is why St. Lucia is the way it is right now, my brothers and sisters. Back in the days, every year, at least five or ten farmers would purchase new vehicles in Denrynov. Right now, that is not happening, my brothers and sisters. That is not happening. Because they cannot afford the vehicles. Two weeks ago, the farmers, when they were ready to harvest, they produce, the government told them, those farmers work very hard. And when you're ready to rip, when you're ready to rip the fruit of your labor, for a government you up you, you voted for, you elected to make life better for you, they are telling you, "We don't have a market to sell the banana, so leave your bananas on the farm." That is what the farmers are going through in St. Lucia, my brothers and sisters. And we need you, we need you to come home, to be part of that movement, part of that movement to rescue St. Lucia. Think about those young boys, those young men growing up. And their parents have to choose which meal, whether it's breakfast or whether it's dinner. They will have to sacrifice. Think about those families who can only afford one meal a day for their families, especially for the younger ones, the babies, the elderly. That is what St. Lucia is right now. You have to choose meals because you cannot afford to buy things like bread, tuna fish, corned beef, oil. You cannot afford to buy gas, your cooking gas, eggs. That is the states St. Lucia is in right now, my brothers and sisters. And because we are on the heels of an election, they have the most massive vouchers, $200 to give. Divided $200 by 60 months, and tell me what it is, how much? That is how much they value our people in St. Lucia. And now, they are everywhere trying to buy votes, writing checks for $1,000. We have to let them know our Flabau people are not for sale. We will take it and vote them out. When we see what is happening with spots in St. Lucia right now. Fifteen, fourteen years ago, fourteen years ago, the National Lottery was receiving approximately $80,000. So the National Lottery is the body which finance youth on sports. That was fifteen years ago. They were receiving $80,000. And while they were receiving the $80,000, we had more spots in St. Lucia. And right now, the National Lottery is receiving a million dollars every month. And we have no spots in St. Lucia, my brothers and sisters. And they will speak about crime is out of control in St. Lucia. What do you have to keep the kids out of the block? There's no spots in St. Lucia. There's no community football. There's no basketball. There is no cricket. There is no netball in St. Lucia. So what do you expect the kids to do? And there is no form of employment for them. This is a very dangerous recipe. This is a recipe for disaster. And we are feeling that disaster right now. And we need, and we need to rescue St. Lucia. We need to make a difference. We need to make the sacrifice and come down home, my people. Come down home to rescue the Sweet Helen. Because it's affecting you here also. Because right now, you have to send more money back home. And that is the problem. So when our economy is doing well, you'll have less money to send home. Your family will be able to go to the doctor when they are not feeling well and don't worry about "Mwuzo deso you were support team when you were the doctor." That will stop. Imagine you have a lady, a seventy, a seventy-year-old. She is sick. And she is trying to contemplate whether should I take that $1.50 to visit the doctor or pay my electricity bill. Those are the tough decisions our people in St. Lucia have to make. And it's not easy. When I go and speak to different people on the ground and I see their living conditions. From the time I was endorsed as the candidate for Denrynov, it's something I have been doing. I have given away over, close to 1,000 hampers to different families because they cannot afford to buy their basic needs. They cannot afford to buy toilet paper. And we have a government right now because we are on the heels of election, spending money everywhere in all corners of St. Lucia. We'll take the money and vote them out. St. Lucia deserve better. We deserve much better in St. Lucia, my brothers and sisters. And don't be fooled by what you heard and what you seen out there. The Labour Party is in panic mood. I hope you guys saw the movement in Denrynov on Thursday. While I was away, my team put together a massive whistle stop in Denrynov because the people are tired and they are frustrated with the Labour Party. They are frustrated with the leadership style of my opponent, the level of arrogance, the level of victimization. And a man with no vision who is a follower. He pay your mutheho, he pay your desanba. Shaun must go and he will go. So I thank you, my brother.
Alright, thank you, thank you. Alright, alright. That's my people, so people on fire tonight, so people on fire tonight. Mama Flabo. That picture address came from somebody of humble beginnings. He did not let, let his circumstances define him. Embodied his true spirit of service brought to myself. We need to rescue St Lucia. Bradley said, we need to rescue St Lucia. And in order for us to rescue St Lucia, you know, we have to make our voices heard at the polls. Where do we make our voices heard? Alright, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call Kenya. I'm calling on Kenya.
Mama Flabo. Esu power, esu power, esu power, DJ esu power. Give me that bit, give me that nuka ba leba. Ah, 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 me bakata nuwet, nuka ba leba, nuka ba leba. Me du tiwa, me du tiwa, me du tiwa, mama flabo, esu power. Thank you, DJ. About this time, St Lucia. No matter how far you are, no matter how far we are. La jenuka ale setli si, wyebe no. No matter how far you are, bara luka ale setli si, wyebe no. No matter how far you are, when somebody seek who they call on, you and I, right? So we have a right to speak in St Lucia, right? Your labor partner say, your partner say. About this time, this is the moment now. We have a man who has dedicated his life for St Lucia. We have a man, when he was the Prime Minister of St Lucia. And whether they like it or not, the Bible say, you shall decree a thing and it shall be established. Tonight, I decree and declare that Michael, Alan Michael Shastay shall be the next Prime Minister of St Lucia in the mighty name of Jesus. Whether the devil likes it or not, whether labor likes it or not, whether Philip J. Pierre likes it or not, our next Prime Minister gonna be Alan Michael Shastay. Ki ovele ki opele. Brothers and sisters, we have a man who don't need to come to politics to take care of us because he could stand for himself, right or wrong? We have a man who has a vision for health in St Lucia, right or wrong? We have a man, when you look at the Viewfort Airport, merci, lau kide jet blue. Abuga desa, abuga eseda kalash pulud pude sed, se kwefche. Now where, Michael Shastay gave us a hospital, seventy percent almost done. Me labor party, yes, vision. No vision at all. Many of us have lost family and friends in St Lucia because of no health system. But I am here tonight, you are here tonight, we are here tonight, St Lucia, you are here tonight to welcome, to welcome, to welcome our next Prime Minister, Alan Michael Shastay. Let's put our hands together for our next Prime Minister, our next PM. Welcome, 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 welcome. We have people outside, we just want you to move back a little. At the back has some space, there's some space, there's people outside, we want to allow them to come inside. So, semu no. Because some people are sitting down. And you're blocking them, just move a little backwards. Those are the door, you are welcome to move in. Just clear the door, please, we need the people to come in. Because everybody needs to hear the big plans we have for St Lucia. Everybody needs to hear our next PM speak. They are watching us live in St Lucia. And the next thing is that, some people at the back, we're not hearing what is being said. So those of us to the front, could we just please try to keep our voices down? Because what we'll hear tonight gonna be what you gonna share on your platform. What you hear tonight, that's what we're gonna stand on. Because for sure victory gonna be for the United Workers' Party. God bless St Lucia and welcome again, our next PM. We love you, we appreciate all your work and we're gonna pray for you. We're gonna surely come down and vote the St Lucia Labour Party out. And we're gonna surely come down and vote the United, the United, the United, the United Workers' Party.
New York.
Connecticut.
Philadelphia.
New Jersey. We're all in the house tonight. You know. I thought, I thought when I came here tonight, I was preparing this speech to get you guys fired up. For you guys to understand the urgency of this election. But I can see, I don't have to say anything. Y'all know already, it's time for change. Time to bring Flabo back into the house. You know, the song that I play, "Action Speaks Louder Than Words", is a song that I started playing from the time I got into politics in 2011. Because that is who I am. I'm a man of action, not a man of false words. And I want to say that the other person that was a man of action and a man of not many words was Sir John Compton. I'm a man, like Sir John, with tremendous amount of faith. And when the Lord, when the Lord makes a decision, we must honor that decision and respect it. And we must understand what was the message that he was sending to us. The night of the election, I was coming to my great constituency of Miku South. And when I was coming into the constituency, I got a call from a young woman who was just in a car accident at Eskap. So I turned around from the Azure Gap and went back to Eskap. And when I got there, her mother, her son and herself were in a car accident. The ambulance was just taking them out of the cars, but she was still embedded in the car. So I waited with her, held her hand. The mother and the son went off to the hospital. And I waited for, until they got her out of the car. This is on the day of the election. I went to the hospital and I knew I was supposed to be there. Because when I arrived, the doctor told me that the mother had died. And her mother and her were not just a mother and a daughter. They were the best, they were the best of friends. Can you hear me now in the back? Can you hear me in the back? Alright. So. So when I met the doctor, I said to the doctor, you cannot tell the lady that her mother died because she will go into shock. So we agreed to keep it a secret. And I stayed at the hospital because the young boy, they did not know if he had internal bleeding or not. So I waited there until they could do all the tests with him. And I watched the results of the election in the waiting room of St Jude's. That's where I watched the elections. And I didn't get done at the hospital until midnight. Now, all of you know St Lucia, you know how politics goes in St Lucia. Labor win, I'm driving from Viewfort back to Grozalie. So when I'm passing Viewfort South, tiwa. When I pass, when I pass Miku North, tiwa. When I pass Denry South, when I pass Denry North, when I pass Casri Southeast, when I pass Casri South, when I pass Casri Central, when I pass Casri North, when I get to Grozalie, I have more tiwas in my backside and all of them. I took tiwa. The next day, the next day, I was up at eight o'clock and I went to work. But I want to say to you, it took me several weeks before I tried to understand the message that the Lord gave me. And the message he gave me is that life is more important than politics. He also taught me that you must believe in yourself. And the times where you have to doubt yourself, that's when you must have the most amount of faith. I know that when we were in government, what we inherited. People want to forget that when we came into government, Kenny Anthony said something went wrong. And what went wrong is that the government of St Lucia was spending more money every day than they were making. And as a result of it, they were borrowing money to pay for salaries. They were borrowing money to pay for debt. And now the bankers were saying, no more. Unemployment in St Lucia was at twenty-five percent. Youth unemployment was at forty-four percent when we came into government. We forget. We forget the despair that the country was going through. Every day I was going to town and I would go to a little restaurant and I would meet people all dressed up. And you know where most of them are coming from? From the bank to give the bank back the keys to their house. Because that's how bad things were in St Lucia. And that is why in 2016, the Flabos wanted a change and they said that they wanted to build a new St Lucia. I didn't lie to you. I told you I was not coming in to just fix the little things. We were coming in to do the big things and to make change. The change was also for the South. My people from Miku South, people from Miku North. We have suffered because of the lack of a vision of the Labour Party. From nineteen ninety-seven all the way until 2006, ayeh, nothing happened in the South. Nothing. It took Sir John to come out on his deathbed because we now know that Sir John was not well. But Sir John was willing to sacrifice himself to make sure that Flabo got back into government. And we tried, we had earthquakes, we had Hurricane Tomas, y'all forget. We had the economic recession. And Flabo stayed strong even though we were fighting inside with Richard Frederick, El Quapo. Even back then. Labour came in in 2011. Kenny Anthony cried. He said he would never thought he was going to be given the opportunity to govern again. And instead of governing the country, he came out with wickedness and revenge fit on all the people of St Lucia and made things worse than it had ever been before. That is what we inherited in 2016. And I said to the people of St Lucia, give me three years. Three years and I will fix your problems for you. Now think of it, think for a moment. I came in, did I increase the taxes on the people of St Lucia? I said I would reduce the VAT rate, I reduced the VAT rate. Everybody wanted to fight, including the IMF. And I said, hell no, we're bringing down the VAT rate. People in this country are in too much pain and we're gonna put ching, ching, ching in people's pockets. I put an airport tax, why? Because the tourists were paying the tax. I put a gas tax and let us remember why we put the gas tax, one dollar and fifty cents. Because the taxes they had before was if you had a truck as a young man, you had to pay a fee. But if you didn't use the truck, you still had to pay the tax. So we said, no, 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 no. You pay the tax as you go, you get work and you put gas in it, you pay. And we said we would use that money to fix up the roads of St Lucia. When we were fixing up the roads in St Lucia, they told you, you can't eat roots. And too many people in St Lucia believe that nonsense. They told you, when we were bringing DSH, horses before hospitals. What you have today, you have no horses and you have no hospital. That make sense to you? Up to now, I don't know what horses before hospital has a dating. But all I know is today, I have no horses and we have no hospital. Action speaks louder than words. My people, we lowered the tax rates. We spread the business. Today in St Lucia, one man has gotten almost a billion dollars of contracts. Can you imagine that? One man has a billion dollars worth of contracts. During United Workers' Party in Covid, you couldn't find a contractor. You couldn't get a bako. You couldn't get a truck because the money was going everywhere, everyone. They told you about, oh, Fresh Start and Guy Joseph. The same Fresh Start that's building the tavern, um, homes that the Prime Minister yesterday said was state of the art, that's, that's Fresh Start. The same Fresh Start that is doing shock. I have no problem in eating my vomit. Well, they have a lot more vomit to eat. Because when they went to the Daihe Mall and had to open up the hall, the, 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 a pills court. And they said it was a state of the art building. The Daihe Mall stayed there for how many years since nineteen ninety-five? Nobody could fix it. United Workers' Party and Alan Shastay, we went in and we put in a modern building that people can get jobs in. And that is where we want to take St Lucia. Last night, last night, your Prime Minister came to New York City. The invitation last night, was it for SLP or for the government of St Lucia? But the, but the post who said, government of St Lucia, who paid for the airfare to come up here? You paid your airfare enough. Who paid for the, the, the meeting last night? Who paid for the, the, the meeting last night? Your tax dollars. Right? Can you imagine going to a meeting, a government meeting, and everybody is dressed in red? The Prime Minister doesn't even hide it anymore. But I want you to know, that I know you know that yourself. You can fool some of the people some of the time, but you cannot fool all the people all the time. And that is what this election is about. Is to tell the Labor Party we've had enough of the lies. Now, I've stopped using the word "lie", you know, because I much prefer what the definition of a lie is. The definition of a lie is to deliberately deceive someone. So it's when you say somebody to something, when you say something to somebody and you want to deceive them. That is all I heard last night. Let's take this one. You see, if you cannot be honest with yourself, if you cannot be honest with yourself, then you will never be able to change anything. The Prime Minister said that medicine is cheaper in Saint Lucia than in New York. So let me ask you a question. You all don't have insurance in New York? And even when you don't have insurance, you all know how to get it. The man went as far as to say to get a blood test in Saint Lucia, it's cheaper than getting a blood test in New York. That's who you want as your Prime Minister? That's why things can't get better in Saint Lucia, you know? They could never get better on the Labor Party. Because if the truth walked in front of them, they wouldn't recognize it. United Workers' Party left the plan for the Labor Party. We left them a modern hospital. A hospital where all the electricals are in the roof, all the plumbing is in the roof. Modern. But instead, you all have to get vaccinated. They already spent a hun- Listen to me, listen to me carefully. Kenny Anthony and Stevenson King together spent $130 million on the old hospital. We came in and they said it was gonna cost another $100 million to finish it. Maybe. And maybe it's gonna cost more. So we decided to build a brand-new building and to use the old building as a training school for nurses to be part of the hospital. The new hospital was going to cost $170 million EC. Brand-new hospital. Bigger than OKEU. They came back in. They have now spent $300 million. So that means you've spent $430 million on an old building. And you still cannot open the hospital. You cannot. That is why when, when Philip now has the bell in his arms and he's thinking as to when he can open up Saint Jude's, he's thinking that when he can solve the problems of crime in Saint Lucia, he's thinking about how he's going to be able to solve the problems of cost of living. What he's doing, he's holding the bell so the bell cannot ring and his legs are shaking. Kakagro! And I challenge Philip here. Tomorrow, if you are a man, ring the bell. You coming to the house and you telling me, telling me, "Hey, oh, we did a poll, we did a poll." And you going to lose in Miku South. And you're all going to lose 17-0. I said, "Well, boss, if you have 17 seats and there's only 17 seats, ring the bell! What you waiting for?" So... Let me tell you, let me tell you why the Prime Minister cannot ring the bell. I love the people from my constituency, you know, in Miku South. Because the people in my constituency always tell me what is going on. So a man said, "Uncle Shas, you cap the gas price." I said, "Yes, sir." He said, "Philip here capped it right, the, 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 the price of gas." I said, "Yes." He said, "But the difference is, you cap the price to keep the price below. He is capping the price so it stays higher." You see, the people know the Labor Party is taxing the people of this country and then telling you that they're helping you. So they're telling you they're paying for CXTs. Let's think of that for a moment. 2,000 students a year sit, uh, CXTs. On average, maybe five, five CXTs. $300 each. If the government wanted to, to pay the CXTs for all of the students, it's $300, $3 million EC. Now, why is that an insult? Because the same El Quapo the same El Quapo on his show on Thursday said to y'all, not my words, you know, his words. He said that the government in 2024 made $240 million on CIT. So what is $3 million from $240 million? You're leaving the 2.5% levy that's getting $40 million. Take the $40 million from the 240 and take the tax price off. The gas prices you're leaving at $16 that you should be at $12.50 because we have the highest price of gas in the OECD. Why don't you save the people the money? You have $240 million. $240 million would pay the healthcare insurance for every Saint Lucian for two years. I want to say to El Quapo tonight, there's a lady in, that used to be in his life and she built more homes than he did. And he knows who I'm talking about. Okay? $240 million means that 12,000 Saint Lucians could have gotten 20,000 EC dollars each to go to fix their homes. I want us to think what that number is. The Prime Minister came here and wants to tell you about the things that he said that he's achieved. Let me tell you what he's achieved. We've had three years of the highest homicide rate in the history of Saint Lucia. He will always be the Prime Minister that allowed the price of bread in Saint Lucia to double. He is the Prime Minister who allowed bus fares to go up. That is what he's known for. He has the highest level of taxation in the history of Saint Lucia. They put in 15%. I took it down to 12.5%. And I was gonna take it to 10% if it had not been for COVID. They've put it back to 15.5%. And if they're going to do the universal health that they talk about, they're going to increase the VAT rate to 18.5%. If you think here in the diaspora, one, that you're not gonna have to spend more money home, when if the Labor Party wins again, all of y'all going to be broke trying to help your families back home. All of y'all going to be broke. Because the people are going to be suffering so much in Saint Lucia. Now, I'm a man of action. And I want to give you the confidence tonight that the United Workers' Party is ready to govern again. We have gone out and we have 12 new candidates in United Workers' Party. Marcella Johnson, a successful businesswoman. I call her the Tiger Lady because she's warned me. There's no way that Marcella would stay quiet in the cabinet if the people in Grozalie can't get water. There's no way that Marcella would stay quiet in the cabinet if the healthcare centers have no medicine. There's no way that Marcella would have stayed in the cabinet and roads that should have been repaired years ago and they stopped them that she would have allowed that to happen.
The election, so what, where there is gate, right? Thank you, Uncle Shas, for coming here.
Thank you. As soon as we get back into government, we're gonna start developing the land properties again. La Fag, Beauches, Chalk Tavern, all around Saint Lucia. But in order for those to work, we have to fix up the healthcare. We have to fix the crime. We have to fix the roads. We have to fix the water. So we have a lot of work to do. I don't want you all to believe that we have an easy job. But the problem with Flabo, remember what Sir John used to say? He said, "When you are with Labor Party, they have one hand that lays an egg and you hear their hand crowing all over the place. A turtle comes and lays 100 eggs and it comes up quietly and leaves justice quietly." This time, we're gonna have to tell people always what we are doing all the time. Because we made it look too easy. But not again because there's too much at stake. So not only are we gonna make land available for you, but we're gonna fix up the facilities so you want to come home. I wanted to, I want you that it's an easy decision. When you see what's going on at home, you say, "Hmm, I'm coming home now." Especially these days. Especially these days. You want to come home where people are going to love and appreciate you and we can build a great country together. Thank you.
My name is Gertrude Hippolyte. I actually do not have any questions for you, Mr. Prime Minister in the making and Mr. Phil Jones. But I have an advertisement. I am a member of the Saint Lucia National Day Committee and y'all will have to hear me. Thank you. And we are having the children's Christmas party on December 6th and we would like every parent with children 12 years and under to register for the Christmas party. The email address is slndc2019@gmail.com. That's one advertisement. We need all the kids there. It's, it's gonna be fun. Face painting, it's, it's something we used to do and we bringing it back to New York. The location is going to be at Saint Lucia House. This Saturday, December 6th. The next advertisement is our National Day, which is December 13th. We will be having Festival of Lights, lighting of the tree. We're gonna be out there portraying our culture in poetry, dancing, everything you could think of. Again, we also have the lantern competition. For those of you who can actually build a lantern, you guys can come out and show how much talent you have building a lantern. And it has to be very creative. Thank you. Everything will be held at Saint Lucia House and I look forward to seeing everyone. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, I'm gonna ask the next person to come with their question.
Yeah, good evening. Um, my name is Lester Innocent. It's a pleasure having you here, Mr. Folgers.
Um, excuse me, everybody, can we have people listening here a little quiet so the next Prime Minister can hear a question?
My name is Lester Innocent. Good evening to everyone. Good evening to you, our future Prime Minister, Mr. Folgers. Um, when you was talking, uh, there's a question that came to my mind and I just wanna ask you, what are most likely we're gonna win? I know we're gonna win next year. Um, my question to you is that, are you planning to continue the development, the project you started for the airport? Because I mean, coming to Saint Lucia, every time you come and you see the airport is a mess like that. I could imagine it would have been done with that a long time ago. I think that's one of the really, really most important projects that you should take back on because this is, this is a very serious project. So that's why I had to come up and ask you about that question.
Um, the answer is absolutely yes. But also what we're gonna be doing is going back and building the cruise ship port in the South. Alright? Because the cruise ship port is gonna make a significant change in people's life and it's gonna work with the whole, with the, with the airport. And we're also gonna be doing the project by Sandy Beach, where we're gonna subdivide the land, put in all the infrastructure and allow, hopefully you can come home and own a restaurant, own a shop or own a small hotel right across from the beach. So we're gonna have the promenade, which is the concrete road. We're gonna have one of the best tourism attractions in the South. But we're gonna have the cruise ship port. All the South can get tourists. So all the people from Soufere, let me see, who knows where De Wash is? You know where De Wash is? Above from Fort Segjak. And we're gonna have a zip line from De Wash going all to Cartier into my constituency. Okay? So we're gonna bring tourists all around the southern part of the Caribbean, of this, of the, of our island. Attractions are what's going to make the difference and these are the investments that Saint Lucians can get involved. So the airport is critical. The cruise ship terminal, developing the lands in the area for housing and also for hotels, only for Saint Lucians.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. So my name is Lucia and I'm from the Denry South constituency. Thank you so much for coming to visit us here today. So my question is like three-pronged, right? I wanna know, would you be able to at least have a constitutionally set date for election? So moving forward, there is no issue as to speculating about Election Day? My second question is, can we build a portal for Freedom of Information Act? Where information is readily available for everybody? Right? And then my final question is, yeah, Freedom of Information Act, a portal and Election Day constitutionally due? So we don't have to speculate about Election Day anymore. Thank you so much.
The most important thing that we have in Saint Lucia is our democracy. And we need to do a better job of making everybody understand what our Constitution is. As I said up in Canada, you can give a person a car, but if they don't know how to drive, where they going? So democracy is the same thing. We can say you have democracy, but if people don't understand what that democracy is. So the key of the Constitution is your civil rights, of which public information is one of them. And I am a big believer in referendums. We should be outraged that the government went to the CCJ. Whether we support the CCJ or not, makes no difference. The people of Saint Lucia should have been given the choice as to whether they want to go or not. The government does not have the right to make that decision for the people. And United Workers' Party is going to create more referendums for the people to participate in the governance of our country. And there will be a significant amount of constitutional reform, including the Public Service Act and the ability for Saint Lucians to hold government officials accountable. Right now, all we have is what's called a, um, um, a judicial review. And it's very expensive. I've been through it. Okay? And, and, and the right of people to know and to hold their government has to be made much easier. And one of the ways to do it is to have committees. So when there's new pieces of legislation coming in, we believe that they have to be brought at the committee levels and to the community levels before they come to parliament. My last piece to you. Bradley's heard this and all my candidates have heard this. In parliament, they represent their constituents, all of them. And they must debate the bill based on their constituents. Because you see, we have a problem. There's supposed to be a separation between cabinet and parliament, but there isn't. Because the same people who are in cabinet are the same people who are in parliament and we need to resolve that problem. Okay? So thank you very much for your questions. I agree a whole lot with you.
Thank you. Next person?
Good evening. My name is Charlene Felicia, proud member of the Denry North United Workers' Party Group. Um, there are so many things happening in St. Lucia right now. I have multiple questions, but I'm only going to ask the first two. Um, in terms of affordable housing, will it be houses or condos built by the government? Because I remember when we were last in, um, in government, we had plans to build multifamily homes. So would that be the same, um, structure or will it have an option where young people can also purchase lands with that, the proposal that, um, the, well, government in waiting is, is making? If, if that isn't something, probably that is something that you would want to consider, including land ownership as part of that package. And my second question is, the current administration has the one degree per household initiative. But just by observing, the job market in St. Lucia isn't feasible um, to be able to efficiently employ young people with these degrees. So what is it that the United Workers' Party has in plan to address these, these gaps? Where everybody in a household has a degree, but where are the jobs that's going to have them to efficiently utilize these degrees?
Um, in terms of the housing, it's going to be both lots of minimum of 5,000 square feet, which makes it expensive to begin with, as well as townhouses and apartments and depending on the location. So the closer you are to the city centers, it has to be apartments because that's what's going to make it affordable. And we're gonna have lease to purchase agreements, especially for solutions. For the diaspora, we're gonna be putting in lots where we put in the roads, the sidewalks and all the water. Because a lot of people have worked with developers who you buy the land from and they make the promise they're going to do it and they never, they never do it. And after you, so what we're doing is we're putting it in first so you know that that is, that is going to be there already in place. In terms of the jobs, you're 100% correct. That's why we're offering free tuition at Sir Arthur and we're going to strengthen the programs at Sir Arthur to match with the jobs that we have in St. Lucia. So we have to much, do a much better job in that regard than we've ever been doing before. But the big one, and you guys know this, during Covid, people were working from home. Right? Now, if you were working from home, you means you could be in St. Lucia working. Right? So what we're going to be doing is creating WeWork stations all around St. Lucia that if somebody wants to do online studying, they can go to the WeWork station. If they're gonna get a job that's abroad, meaning I can work from St. Lucia in a company internationally, now you have a place that you can be able to go to. So like the call centers, correct, like Ojo Labs and take it to the next level. But we have to become international. St. Lucia is too small to be isolated. And so we have to make sure that the bandwidth is there, the, the technical support, the office space is available to you and you don't have to commute. It's in your communities, in each one of your communities.
Alright, before we move on to the next question, I would like to ask a little bit of quietness because we are live and persons in St. Lucia are asking to, just persons at the back, just a little quietness because we have a whole country looking at us right now and we, they want to hear the questions and they want to hear the answers as well.
My name is Sarah Fountainel from Mecool. I have multiple questions. My first question is, why is the process of getting birth certificates still so complicated? And we need stronger laws on drunk driving, speeding drivers and we have to hold them accountable. Stronger laws on women being abused. And why is it taking so long to fix the roads?
A lot of questions. So let me start with the last one. United Workers' Party created a dollar fifty tax. United Workers' Party created the gas tax in order to fund the road, the road redevelopment program. Because when I left government, the estimate was it was gonna cost a billion EC dollars to fix up all of the roads. I only got to half, half a billion. Okay? And there's so many more roads, but the key with the road is the road maintenance programs. So the government had only been giving one million dollars a year for the maintenance of roads. We brought it to 10 million dollars. I don't even know what this government is doing right now. Alright? So you have to maintain the roads and do a better job of maintaining those roads. In terms of women and abuse, 100% correct. I've seen too many women being taken advantage of in the system. We have a journalist, right, that the Speaker of the House came out and said that she should be arrested if she was guilty. Too many women are being taken advantage of in our, in our system. All the women who were accused, who were raped and had the courage to stand up. And we've seen them being intimidated before they get to the court case. And in some instances, the women have been killed before they go to the court. We have to do a better job of protecting our women when they, when they are asking for help. In terms of the drunk driving, 100% again. We installed 1,200 cameras and the cameras are not even working. But we have to now change the system where when you get caught on the camera, that now we, like in the States, when you don't pay your toll and they just take a photograph and you can get fined right away. We have to make the same laws in St. Lucia.
And can you put speed bumps?
You can put speed bumps, but, but it becomes very cumbersome. You can't put speed bumps on a highway. But what you have to do is to enforce the speed limit. And people who are driving without lights, people who are driving without their driver's license, we have to do a much, much better job and that's why we have to strengthen the traffic department in St. Lucia to make that happen. Okay?
The birth certificate.
The birth certificate. The problem with the birth certificate is when they were going to the new, the new passports, they decided to re-register everyone. And a lot of solutions were having problems in getting their birth certificate because the name that they had today and the name that was on the birth certificate was a problem. This has been going on for too long. I think we have to pass a law that basically says to people, when you go in and if you have a name problem, you can sign a document right there and get your name changed. I, I seen it, when you become a naturalized citizen in, in America, you can change your name if you want to. We have to make that happen because we cannot keep putting the onus on the people to get that resolved.
Thank you very much. Alright, we're gonna take a few more questions.
Yes, good night, Mister Prime Minister in waiting. Good night, Mister Phil Jones. My name is Greg Richards. I'm from Denry South. The question I would like to ask.
Excuse me? Can we have a more, can we, can we lower our voices a little so that young man can ask his question?
Okay, the question I would like to ask you guys is, given the fact that corruption is plaguing the politics in St. Lucia, Mister Prime Minister in waiting, that question is for you because you are the leader. What mechanism that you are going to put in place to make sure that solutions get a solution to all this, to all this corruption, especially where we seeing young politicians are getting rich fast? What kind of mechanism, mechanism that you are going to put in place to see that does not happen in your cabinet?
So, it's very sad, it is very sad to see what's happened in St. Lucia. Where the CIP, we ask the questions, the Prime Minister says he doesn't know, the minister says he doesn't know and there's no accountability. The law says that they're supposed to provide an annual audit report. They don't even do that. It has taken now, it's taken now international countries to enforce our own laws for us. The new bill that was passed was draconian by the OECD, which gives the OECD the right now to do the audits themselves and to hold the states accountable when it comes to CIP. Our Integrity Commission cannot be just a name. It has to be well-funded and it has to be able to do the things to make sure that people know what the truth is. Our audit department is independent, but they are not staffed properly. I will make sure that we change that and we bring back the independence of those things. One of the big issues is the Public Service Commission. Governments get to appoint the Public Service Commission and I think that that has to be changed. Because the Public Service Commission is also supposed to be holding civil servants accountable. And it must be made easier to have judicial review cases in instances where we are concerned as to what's taking place. So let's take, let's take Slaspa as an example. How could Slaspa have been made to make the decision to give away all the revenue? So just think of it for a moment. Slaspa was earning $6.50 off of every cruise ship passenger. They came in and they gave the 6.50 to GPH. They didn't put that out to bid. They didn't tell us, they gave it to them. And they increased the tax to 10 dollars. So GPH is collecting 10 dollars on every person. They turned around and gave GPH tax-free holidays for 40 years. They gave them a lease for 40 years. And you remember when I went to the house and I said, when are you going to tell the people of St. Lucia that you leased the property on the ports for $1 a year for 30 years? He said, that's not true. And I showed him his own documents where they have done that. How can that happen? And that's why we say that when we get into government, that contract must change. The ports must come back to the people of St. Lucia and we must hold the people that did those things on behalf of the people. We must hold them accountable. Because until we hold them accountable, nothing will change in St. Lucia. So CIP, NLA, Bradley was talking about NLA, they went and they borrowed 80 million dollars from the NLA. The NLA is a regulatory agency. But NLA was giving out contracts to fix up the stadium and to do other things. Up to now, we don't know who got the contracts. We don't know how much money was spent. That cannot go on in our country. And we're gonna have to find legislation to make sure that that cannot happen. And if it does happen, that the people have a voice. But I'm gonna say to all of us, we are also to blame. Because when we see these things, we just stay quiet and we wait for the next election. We have to hold our government, including United Workers' Party for government. We must hold them accountable because the money belongs to you and we must be able to explain everything. So when I was Prime Minister and we had instances where there was questions, whoever had to be held accountable, I held them accountable. Philip Pierce said that there cannot be any corruption and they cannot even be the impression of corruption. And here it is in his office, they have so many people that we think they're corrupt. And yet he doesn't want to be accountable and he says he's not gonna do anything. So that's a man who says one thing and does something totally different. Alan Shastney and the United Workers' Party proved to you that whatever he said we were going to do, we did it and we will do it again.
Two more questions?
Good night, good night to Mister Shastney, Mister Bradley and all my UWP followers. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Mister Barbono. I am Mister Barbono, the only guy that could challenge Yadi and Jaim. I am the, I am the guy that Jaim called a jackass on the radio, live television and every time. I call his name, he call me a jackass. Okay. Mister Prime Minister, my question for you is, when we are coming home, right? We are coming home, we want to bring a little gift for our family. We want to bring some clothes, some shoes, even some handbags to our people. And the SLP party believe that every baron that is coming to St. Lucia is for speculation. And we don't do that. Long time we used to bring old clothes for our, used clothes. But now we have to do something new because everybody's upgrading themselves right now. So we have to bring something new to the people down there. So I'm asking you, what do you have in place for people that are bringing stuff to people down there? Do you have any place?
I think it's very important that we create nonprofit organizations so that there's something that's taking place and there's an entity we can hold accountable. So that the, so that the nonprofit organization will identify who is going to get and to make sure to bring for those purposes. So anything that can help improve the quality of life of solutions, I think that we have to find a way to make that work. And so you will have our support.
You going for the last, last? Oh. I guess we have two more questions. We're gonna be squeezing more questions.
Thank, thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Alan Shastney, my advice to you is that, um, when ministers have done things wrong.
Can we give the young man a listening ear? Can we be a little quiet so that young man can ask his question?
Yes, I would say, when ministers have done something wrong, I believe in what we're lacking is taking the streets. And I've told my brother that, Benson Amilis, my brother, and I am an advocate of that, taking the streets. Be radical, but do it the right way. We don't take the streets, example, CIP. It's crazy. We need to take the streets. You see, just like every Sunday, we have our Sunday life. Put that in place. Put it together. We need to take the streets and I think it's gonna be effective, very effective. Thank you. I, I agree with you and I want to, I want us to be reminded, how many marches did I have in the last five years? But there are people who feel the threat of victimization in St. Lucia. Let's face it. 60% of the households of St. Lucia, one second, guys.
Yes. A little quietness please, guys. Let's allow Mister Shastney to answer the question.
60% of the houses in St. Lucia depend on some level of government revenue. Whether it is somebody in the family who's working for government or whether they're getting a contract from government or there's somebody they know that they're benefiting from are getting it. And so people are genuinely fearful and this government has victimized people like you guys. They hold nothing back, nothing. Bradley, all my, my candidates can tell you stories of what is going on. But we have to have, be courageous enough now in St. Lucia. We feel that our voices being silenced, something is wrong and we need to say so. Because if we say nothing, it's only going to get worse. Now we have a situation. We have a situation right now where people believe that the elections are coming soon. And that is what the Labour Party now. And that is what the Labour Party now is scared. Because people are quiet, but you see now, people are coming out to the meetings. People are starting to voice their opinion and the Labour Party knows they are in trouble. Because the people of St. Lucia are tired of what's been going on and they need a party that's going to right the wrong. Because what has been taking place in St. Lucia has been wrong and we need to right that wrong. And United Workers Party will stand for that. We may, at, at least in the elections, make your voice heard. If you don't vote, whoever wins is who you voted for. There's no such thing as not voting in St. Lucia. Come out, vote. All those people that were with United Workers Party from nineteen fifty-five, nineteen sixty-four to nineteen ninety-seven. Many of them left and went to the Labour Party. Come back home to the United Workers Party and let us move our country forward. Enough of these people, Labour Party cannot deliver anything for the country and they have proven they cannot deliver anything. It's time for a change.
Thank you and good night. Welcome again, welcome, welcome again. Uh, my question is that many times you go back to St. Lucia and then you're asking, you want to open a bank account? As a solution from, you know, from the out, the diaspora overseas. And the banks will ask you land paper. They'll ask you their address. They'll ask you for social security, they'll ask you for so many things as a solution. Now, we see a lot of investors coming back home, coming to St. Lucia investing and I don't think they ask that much question. I used to work with Invest St. Lucia in the account department before I moved here. And there's a lot of, um, things in place where investors could come to St. Lucia and invest. We thank God for that. But when we St. Lucians, we're not ready to retire. We're still young, we're still working and we do contribute immensely to the economy of St. Lucia. And we wanting to at least have a bank account back home or sometimes you just want that account. When you travel, you don't need to travel with money. You already know you have money in St. Lucia, so that's not much to worry about, it's just your ticket and you want to go there. My other, um, what will the United Workers Party government do in order to help us? Because we're not ready to move to St. Lucia, but when we calm down, how could we, we could have at least own what we want in St. Lucia? The other question is that some of us want to invest in St. Lucia. And for instance, you want to buy land, but still be here, build your condo and probably do, um, Airbnb and things of that nature. What is in place for St. Lucia? In a round, since now we have both parties asking us to come and vote, come and vote. Have our right, we still have that right as a solution to go and vote. So why we don't have that right to come and have a bank account? Why we don't have that right to have some things in place where we could come and invest? Because while we invest, even though it's five persons we employ. If all of us have, maybe ten percent of us employ five person in our jobs, in our businesses, that's employment tool for the government. The other thing, you mentioned a great thing about where people could work and, uh, um, where people could work in different centers in the different communities, this is a great thing. Because I, I personally, I have my own, my own business and my I T person is all the way Nigeria. Which I pay cheaper for my I T work and my advertisement. And with college gonna be free in St. Lucia, I think it will give us a way to market our, because I see a lot of Nigerians too. They are in Nigeria but work for international companies. The company I worked with in, in, in Manhattan, our accounting department have a whole group in Nairobi. Because they pay them cheaper and they are great accountants too. And even India also, uh, they to are capitalizing on getting accountants or any kind of skills cheaper out of America. How, what would we put in place that even though St. Lucia cannot get that visa to come here to work? But at least companies could hire solutions in St. Lucia to work for us. Because I believe we are intelligent people and we could definitely contribute and that too will contribute to the economy, thank you.
So. In our youth S O S, we spoke about a, um, a new academy that we're gonna be putting together. And that new academy is gonna be doing that, identifying the opportunities for solutions to be able to work remotely from St. Lucia. Let's use two examples. The first one we identified was the cruise ship workers. And we went and we did a training program, the National Apprenticeship Program, where we gave them training for six months for them to get a job on the ship. The second one is nursing. As many solutions that we teach, that we train to be nurses. They can get jobs internationally. The new one now is working remotely. So it's to identify which market set, is it accounting, is it marketing, is it in, um, uh, in technology? Where are those opportunities and provide the training programs through Sir Arthur Lewis and the academy to help get them certified? So they can get those jobs, okay? And provide the physical facilities for them to be able to work out of, to be able to do that. So we're a very big believer that there is a huge market out there for solutions to work, to earn internationally. Now I'm gonna say this to you. Many of you don't even know this, United Workers Party created a new tax system in St. Lucia. Which is called a territorial tax structure. It means if you are living in St. Lucia, but you earn money outside of St. Lucia, that income that you earn is tax-free in St. Lucia. The rate is zero percent. Okay? So this is again an encouragement, we created what's called the Headquarters Act. We encourage businesses to come to St. Lucia, open up a headquarters in St. Lucia. And the solutions that they hire, they don't have to pay any taxes for those persons. Okay? So we want to see solutions getting better paid jobs. Because when they have better jobs, that means they're going to invest in their country, build homes and they're going to spend money. And that's what we want to see happen, so small businesses. My constituency of Miku South, that's what we wanted to do, fix up the roads, fix up the, the, um, the recreational facilities. Fix up the healthcare facilities. Put in world-class facilities that when people now are getting jobs, the place that they're going to want to live, I don't want you all to get jealous. I want people to live in Miku South because we have the best education, the best healthcare, the best recreational facilities. And we want to see the South grow. That is what United Workers Party is about, is about moving forward, we don't complain. We go and we work hard and improve people's lives and don't give you all excuses. Let us go and build a new St. Lucia, my people. Let us come together, let us remain committed. The choice is clear, if you want to right the wrong, you must first know the difference between right and wrong. Labour Party does not know the difference between right and wrong. It's only United Workers Party that knows between the right and wrong. So it's for us to go and fix it and make sure it's a better life for all of us. You talked about the bank accounts. I make you this promise. When we win the next elections, we will organize to bring some of the banks up here to listen to what your issues are and see how we can get them resolved. The banking system has become very tough because of the, of the correspondent banks. And that is a lot because how we manage our situation. But I will bring the banks here to make sure they can listen to you. One last thing I'm gonna do. All of you remember I used to work for Air Jamaica, right? Yes? We used to have islands in the park and Prospect Park, I don't know if you all remember that. So one of the things that we wanted to do was to create what we called, give me a second. What we wanted to create, we wanted to create what we call a diaspora bond. Bond. So what it means is people from the diaspora who want to invest back home, that they would have a bond they could invest in. And we would have a proper company to make sure they can invest, whether it's in hotels, whether it's in housing, whether it's in building warehouse spaces, so that you all can collectively benefit. And you don't have to manage your investment back home, but it will give you the ability to get a piece of St. Lucia. And we will make the monies off of that bound, that bond tax-free, okay? But we want you to have a say in where your country is going, not only by voting, but also by investing in your country.
Alright, we're gonna take the last question of the evening, the last question of the evening.
Ead Coldran, Pierrot for the New York Flabbergau Caucus. My question is to you, Mr. Prime Minister. We hearing on the media that persons have been saying that their names are removed from the voters' list mysteriously. All sorts of complaints and we've yet, yet to hear from the chief elections officer as to what's the explanation? My gut fear is that this S L P administration will steal this election. Because they're on the ropes. What mechanisms or what systems our party is putting in place to ensure that this S L P does not rig this election or steal this election?
So first of all. This election, the training the party is doing. The training the party is doing for our inside agents is unprecedented. Okay, it's, it's really very, very good. We also have our own app. Every time that there is a, a new list that comes out, the app tells us who's the new names and where people have been moved to. We must have a conviction to win. You understand that? You must know, it's not about just, it's not about just wanting to win. It means we must win. Here's what, we must refuse to lose. Can you all say that for me? Refuse to lose, refuse to lose, that's what we have to be. So if each individual takes on the responsibility to make sure your name is on the list, if it is not there, let your constituency branch know, we have people on the committees, we have lawyers that are standing by and the moment they step out of place, we will take them to court just as fast as that. We cannot wait for the election. If people have voted and it's only afterwards we find out that we're in trouble, quapo, smoke our pipe. We have to do it upfront. You must play your part, not only for yourself, for your family members, for everybody. Make sure your name is on the list. The last list comes out two weeks before the election. Okay, so we have two weeks to correct any errors that they have. And there is a mechanism for us to hold them accountable to make sure those changes are, have been, have been taken. Every time they call on the radio, I assure you the party is following up each one. Okay, and we've made sure, so there was one where some people were, um, there, two peoples with names were taken off because one died. And the sister had the same name. We found out the problem and we were able to resolve it right away. But it's when people bring those issues to our attention, we will do it, take no chances because we are going to refuse to lose, alright?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody. At this time, we're going to have a little entertainment from some persons from the New York Flabbergau Caucus, they're gonna do a song.
Yo, 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 DJ Sucka. One lebar, two lebar, three lebar. One, two, one.
Ulo!
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 Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Anélé uro, Mama Iflamo. Chas de ka i viwé, pou sofè sèkisì. Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Anélé uro, Mama Iflamo. Chas de ka i viwé, pou sofè sèkisì. Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Anélé uro, Mama Iflamo. Ba ka lé, chas de ka i viwé. Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Chas de ka i viwé, chas de ka i viwé. Chas de ka i viwé, pou sofè sèkisì. Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Anélé uro, Mama Iflamo. Ba ka lé, chas de ka i viwé. Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Anélé uro, Mama Iflamo. Awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Le ba awa jé, chas de ka i viwé. Missy. Le ba awa jé, le ba désolé. Chas de ka i viwé.
Can you move away from the equipment? At this time, we are going to call on Ian Cauldran to do the closing remarks and then we're gonna have some good times after that.
Good evening, Mama Iflamo. Protocol having been established. Guys, let's move back a bit, we interfered the equipment. Too many people at the front. Too many, too many people on the stage for now.
Um, can we, we will do photos with the Prime Minister a little later. After this photo, we're gonna, we're gonna do the closing remarks. We need people to move away from the equipment, move away from the equipment, move away from the equipment. Thank you. Alright.
I was saying, protocol having been established. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the New York Flabot Caucus, the Connecticut Caucus, the Tri-State Caucus, especially Mr. Garfield Oliver, KKR True News, the persons who gave us the opportunity to have this meeting, the owners of this church, the hall. I would also like to thank you, the people, for coming out in your large numbers to our town hall meeting. I trust and hope that it's, it's not gonna be the first nor the last and that our party officials will recognize that we in the diaspora, we have a meaningful contribution to make in shaping our future. I just want to say to each and every one of you, coming here is good, the excitement is good, the energy is good, but most importantly, you need to head on a JetBlue flight and we are voting. So call your family, encourage them. If you have not purchased your airline ticket, it's too late. You have to get on that app, that JetBlue app and buy your ticket. Because I'm saying this, Philippe J Pierre will announce the date of the election tomorrow. So we have no choice and that we have to buy our tickets, head down to St. Lucia, ensure that your name is on the voters' list, head down to St. Lucia and vote. That is the only way we can defeat the St. Lucia Labour Party. So in, so in closing, I want to thank each and every one of you. Let us continue to unite, let us continue to remain focused and let us right that wrong. Have a blessed night, reach home safely, everyone.
Thank you, Mama Iflamo. Now, we're gonna have music, we're gonna have tango and we're gonna have a flabot train. So take it away.
...
Everybody go low, wine and go down low, low. Try to reach it, no flow, spin like a yo-yo. Go down, go down, low, low. Give the girl the L.O., let them see the shadow. Watch out them, it's a thing. Shake your tiling, tiling, ting. Roll your tiling, tiling, ting. Why not tiling, tiling, ting, girl, ting, girl, ting? Shake your tiling, tiling, ting. Roll your tiling, tiling, ting. Why not tiling, tiling, ting, girl, ting, girl, ting? Take your bumper tremble, tonight you make me trouble. We going out of control, understand we jungle. If you are like a ninja, my name is N'Galova. We causing them disaster. Ting, girl, ting? Shake your tiling, tiling, ting. Roll your tiling, tiling, ting. Why not tiling, tiling, ting, girl, ting, girl, ting? Girl, ting? The pop face say them man have a vision. Them man have a pop face say them man have a vision. By gas, only po by gas. By gas, only po by gas. Love in the po, chebe breaks. Only po, chebe breaks. Only po, chebe breaks. Only po, chebe breaks. Now we see madam, oh, them come machine, oh. Now we see madam, oh, them come machine, oh. By gas, only po by gas. By gas, only po by gas. Love in the po, chebe breaks. Only po, chebe breaks. Only po, chebe breaks. Only po, chebe breaks. Bus get, second get, foot get, run back down. Bus get, second get, foot get, run back down. Fuck get, give get, and you reverse. Fuck get, give get, and you reverse. Gimme a high get, gimme a low get. Gimme a light get, gimme a low get. Them man have a pop face say them man have a vision. Them man have a pop face say them man have a vision. By gas, only po by gas. By gas, only po by gas. Love in the po, chebe breaks. Only po, chebe breaks. Only po, chebe breaks. Only po, chebe breaks.
Yes, now I am take a guess, my name start with an S. And I really just stress, dumb party time. Guess I teach you to wine, and motor for my life. And motor get on back for carnival. Who am I? Who am I? Who am I? Who am I? Well, I am the rhythm, I am the bass. I am the melody, I am the bass. I'll have you jumping, more than today. I'll have you walking up, time after time. I am what I am, that I am, who I am, yes I am. So, when everybody keep jumping, I wanna keep you jumping. I wanna keep you jumping, yes I wanna keep you. Higher, higher. I wanna keep you baby, yes I wanna keep you baby. I wanna keep you. I am a tuner, sometimes I could be smooth, sometimes I could be loo. Sometimes I could be good for making love. And when it come to that, say I just make a sweat. Until your body wet from head to toe. Who am I? Who am I? Who am I? Who am I? Well, I am the rhythm, I am the bass. I am the melody, I am the bass. I'll have you jumping, more than today. I'll have you walking up, time after time. I am what I am, that I am, who I am, yes I am. So, when everybody keep jumping, I wanna keep you jumping. I wanna keep you.
Y'all DJ Saki.
Keep you higher, higher. I wanna keep you baby, yes I wanna keep you baby. I wanna keep you over, and over. I wanna keep you, yes I wanna keep you. I wanna keep you. When everybody just jumping, jumping. And so the music just pumping, pumping. And everybody, and everybody.
Yeah. Pick up car to any place, man hop. Man drive. Man hop. Man drive. Man hop. Ellis. Fellas eating my thing, without condom on my thing. When I go on my thing, my thing is chefing nothing. Sting a hole in my thing, and then you hole my thing. When I hole my thing, you say chefing nothing. I cry. I cry. I cry. When you hear the shout, he's saying that eating my thing, without condom on my thing. She says she don't want him, because he that's off him. I cry. I cry. I cry. I got hurt in me. Fellas eating my thing, without condom on my thing. When I go on my thing, my thing is chefing nothing. Sting a hole in my thing, and then you hole my thing. When I hole my thing, you say chefing nothing. I cry.
Good boy, when you get the car, you have to wash the car. You have to oil the car. When you break in the car, someone will do kick the car. And you will not jar. Two hundred fifty square miles he going, very far, he puts in it, it first get. But now all I'm so threatened, there is nothing, check, check. My partner don't check, check. So you better pick, get, and just watch us did that. Cause a man was caper ride and he click, click that. Come on, buy a Corolla, he have no control over. He soft like a turnover. What is his problem? I keep on telling Clovis, his car have to service. He pay him, he no notice. What is his problem? Well, a man rich and jack his car, now he want to cry. Since the day I telling Clovis, boy to knock your ride. He feeling like he is so big, he is Iron Man. Well, look a next man coming to replace the bottom pan. Good boy, when you get the car, you have to wash the car. You have to oil the car. When you break in the car, someone will do kick the car. And you will not jar. Two hundred fifty square miles he going, very far, he puts in it, it first get. But now all I'm so threatened, there is nothing, check, check. My partner don't check, check. So you better pick, get, and just watch us did that. Cause a man was caper ride and he click, click that. When you see that passing, muffler is smoking. That was fit licking, and that was pass up smoking. Anything not going, when you see that just smoking. When you see that inside of that body, the road you see him. That is some relief, go down in a whole pack falling. Okay, that's what's going, whole way it comes in. That makes us holding, that's what's working. And when she pull up, you have that body, it feel real. Good boy, when you get the car, you have to wash the car. You have to oil the car. When you break in the car, someone will do kick the car. And you will not jar. Two hundred fifty square miles he going, very far, he puts in it, it first get. But now all I'm so threatened, there is nothing, check, check. My partner don't check, check. So you better pick, get, and just watch us did that. Cause a man was caper ride and he click, click that.
Everybody on the party, come and move on your hands, eh. We never hold nobody, and nobody were sexy. Let me hear you say. Everything on fire, you the number one desire. Car van over, let me turn the wire, oh. Give me baby, oh. Y'all DJ Saki. Baby, you on fire, number one desire. Car van over, let me turn the wire, oh. You the alanda, show me that. You the loser, show me that. Girl, boy, you love me, go reach anywhere. Girl, boy, you love me, go anywhere. You are the best, baby. Hair and nails and thick, baby. Never you wine and stick, baby. Take it out, and I'll be the one you flip, baby. Every time, tell me fuck to make a trip, baby. You are the best, baby, oh. Miss you anytime, baby, baby, love the vibe, love this time. You make me hot, them are real like horse, blue like river. Sweet mama sweeter, home, let me play with your teeth like the strings of Ebita. Sweet to the return. Baby, girl, you on fire, you the number one desire. Car van over, let me turn the wire, oh.
Girl, I can't believe, I can't believe. Baby like you, come to my way. And me I go like, make me go find somewhere. Where me and you go there, there I go tell you say, I want you. There you go know how much I need you. There I go come watch my roast with lava. Give up to you, tell you, I loving you. There's no dream, eh, no game, eh, I want to share. My love for you, anything you want, I don't give up to you. There will be no more problems, if you leave your love to me, baby. Me and you, para 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 me and you. Girl, me and you, para 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 me and you. Yeah, me and you, para 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 me and you. Girl, just me and you, para 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 me and you. Right, boy.
Baby, na yoga, I want to know what's up. Your honey pot, she man, oh, go all in town. If oboke, I do, oboke, I do. Anywhere she and talk, baby, they must miss a lot. Baby, man.
Thank you every single person for coming here tonight. Thanks again, thank you for coming. Journey mercies to everybody who's traveling far. Journey mercies, everybody. Please get home safely. Thank you for coming.
My Carolina, you don't let. Baby, na yoga. But in a yoga, I show but do evil. Indianapolis, in Miami, goodness. Coach brother, he sign up for liar. Anywhere she and talk, baby, they must miss a lot. Baby, man. Good, man. Only man. Baby, man. I think that's coming. Oh, I have a girl. Oh, I go want you to. Electric fire, lady. Oh, let me fire. You don't let. Like I said, you don't let. You don't let. My Carolina, you don't let. Baby, na yoga.
She said, I like the way you look at me, I'm screaming. I love the way you hold my hands, I'm tripping. The way you take me there, carry me like say I'm a man. The way you carry me there, oh, I go leave me like a man. Yeah, you're malinga, oh. Everyday you are malinga, oh. Yeah, you touch me, oh. Anytime I look you, you are malinga, oh. Yeah, you taking me, oh. The way you want to take me, oh. Yeah, you killing me, to do things that you do, you are touching me. Yeah, I'm a master. Anytime I call out, she was a star. Oh, my daddy, what's up? Oh, my daddy, what's up? She like the way you are the one I star, oh. Anytime I call out, she was a star. Oh, my daddy, what's up? Oh, my daddy, what's up?
Some of them, they follow me. Some of them, they follow me. Some of them keep on me. Every time, they keep a jump sting. Some of them, I want for me. Some of them, move it down for me. They love the way the ladies who wine for me. Everybody now, like a. Everybody go. I like the way you do it, eh. Hey, just hey. All my ladies who wine in our way. See, girls that hey. I'm a cook, you are you hey. All the ladies who are like hey. Move your body to the beat eh. Love me, love me. Take me, leave me. All my ladies, everybody that want me. The sexy money girls that make me. She still love me, she love me. She want me, yeah, she want me. Come and cook to my.
Y'all DJ Saki.
Sexy money girls that make me. Pretty girl, I'm here, me stand up. Pretty woman, I feel me from the stand up. I'm terrible, I'm wonderful. See, the girl, I'm a wonderful, I'm a stand up. I bust the stereo. See, the pretty woman, I feel me like so. And you know, I love, I want to know. Sing it right, now, me jump, now, me jump.
Love, no mercy. Love, no mercy. Whoa, 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 whoa. Love, no mercy. Love, no mercy. Love, no mercy. Whoa, 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 whoa. Moon, can you do something? Ola, way. Ola, way. Ola, way. Moon, can you do something? Ola, way. Ola, way. Ola, way.
Y'all DJ Saki.
Sam, you is a man, say Saki. Just get it done, then you get it done. Make it well, be smart. Be smart. Be smart. Moon, can you do something? Ola, way. Ola, way. Ola, way. Moon, can you do something? Moon, can you do something? Moon, can you do something? Ola, way. Simplicity, oh. He feel me always appreciate, oh. See, girl, the chair, he feel me very charming. Jembi, you too, 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 too. Papa, say, my, you. Tell me, do so, do so, do so, I'm very, very, oh.
Jembi, oh, do so. See, so, 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 Jembi, my, so, do so. See, oh, eh, come, Jembi, my, so, do so. Feel bad, eh, next, oh, nice, Jembi, my, so, do so. See, I feel, I feel, I feel, Jembi, my, so, do so. See, I feel, I feel, I feel, Jembi, my, so, do so. Oh, man, I can't pass it, oh, man, I can't repeat, eh, that's why, I'm real eh. Oh, man, eh, oh, song eh. Oh, man, eh, oh, shit, oh, man, eh, caress eh. Oh, just like that, oh, man, oh, man, back, eh, eh. Same, my, oh, Jembi, my, oh, eh, eh, pass, oh, do so, yeah, so, do so, yeah, so, do so. Yeah, so, do so.
Tonight is your night. Is your world, baby. What you like? Wine on your feet, eh. What you want to be tonight? How you will be alive? Carry on.
Y'all DJ Saki.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. The truth, eh. Tonight is your night. Is your world, baby. What you like? Wine on your feet, eh. What you want to be tonight? How you will be alive? Carry on. Carry on, baby. Carry on. Carry on, baby. Carry on, carry on, carry on. Wine it up, wine it up, wine it up. Oh, when I shake it up, I shake it up, I shake it up, oh, you like that, yeah. Oh, when you hand it up, you hand it up, you hand it up, you hand it up, I like that, yeah. Oh, when you give it to me, give it to me, give it to me, baby, you like that, yeah. Oh, when you give it, you like that, when you give it to me, fuck, I like that. You have me thinking. Now, I want, I want, emergency. Now, I want, I want, emergency. I don't think, oh, the heart go, oh, baby. I don't think, oh, the heart, eh, oh, baby. I don't care, I wanna say, but me. I don't care. The truth, eh.
Y'all DJ Saki.
This, eh, for all I say. All I say. All I say. Let me play it, eh. I don't care, I wanna say, but me. I don't care, I live in my life. You could keep on making your noise, I can't hear you. I don't care, I wanna say, but me. I don't care, I live in my life. You could keep on making your noise, I can't hear you. I will. Way up high, make a tip, like no fly.
Sound, sound, sound.
I feel the party, and we, and we don't stop it, eh.
Mama Flabo. You go, oh, right? Let me tell them. Let me tell them. Mama Flabo, that's all the year. We not go conspiracy. Hey, the mixtape, it's too late, man, what time I say?
Folks have been cutting the stream. Want to thank you for being here with us on Caribbean American News video platform.
You know, what time I say, man, people, eh?
Again, thank you for joining us. We look forward to seeing you on Tuesday. God's willing, when we continue with our live broadcast. God bless you, as you enjoy the rest of the night.
SLP's conference of delegates in Vifort. Prime Minister Philip J. Pierre made a desperate attempt to rewrite history.
You will remember that the United Workers Party only gave COVID support to NIC contributors.
This claim is absolutely false. The truth? In July 2020, under the UWP administration, 5,000 St. Lucians were non-contributors of NIC.
They stream the tears and the cheers so clear. From the church to the pitch, they're always near. Tie the knot or score the gold, my friend. Tie the knot or score the goal, my friend. GVD TV's got you till the end. They stream the highs, they stream the lows. From wedding vows to final shows. Through life's twists and the path it bends. GVD's there, it never ends.
Caribbean American News Media, your Tuesday night power hour. Live every Tuesday at 8:15 PM on Facebook, YouTube, and GVD TV, Channel 115. Join your host, Garfield Oliver, as he dives deep into the latest inclusion developments, regional affairs.
Stephenson King and Kenson Kazimé stopped the $15 million Rodney Bay Highway expansion project because they said the project was overpriced. Now, they have to pay the contractor $21 million and are borrowing an additional $50 million to complete the same road. This is wrong. You deserve better. Vote UWP to make it right.